I want to call to order the public work session for city council today, March the 14th. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to ask, well, ask the, our deputy city clerk, Ms. Monica, she is with us today, and I would now ask, would you call the row, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Ms. Lukasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillich?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Before we begin the work session, I would like to remind council that we did pass a resolution that no recording or other items are allowed on the dais. And so I would just ask my colleague, who has brought that to the meeting, to remove it at this time. Would you like to remove the item, sir? Sergeant of Arms, could you please have this individual, he is out of order, he is not in line with council rules?
What am I being kicked out for?
For violating the council rules.
How did I violate?
We voted that no, we voted last week, a majority of council voted to not allow any other apparatus on the dais for taping or other measures. You have violated that council rule, and I asked you-
How did I violate it?
By bringing it up here. And I asked you, sir-
By bringing it up here?
Right, by putting it on the dais. Sir, if you would please escort him-
So that mean all phones?
No, I didn't say all phones, sir. I said that phone, any phones where you are taping and videotaping individuals on the dais. That's what the rule said, and so if you refuse to take it down, sir, you're going to be escorted out of the meeting.
I ain't taking it down.
Would you please remove him from the meeting?
Ma'am, that's not, that's a better way to handle it than moving-
Sir, sir, a rule is a rule. I have the floor, you do not have the floor.
But the rule doesn't call for removal.
Sir, you do not have the floor.
You can ask for the item to be removed, but you don't have to remove the person.
You do not have the floor. Sir, you do not have the floor.
It's one thing to have power, it's another to exercise it.
You do not have the floor, sir. Thank you. We will proceed with the public work session. We will proceed. Madam City Manager, please proceed with the public work session.
Good evening, everyone, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of city council and Portsmouth family. I would like to now introduce the Commissioner of Revenue. Commissioner Frankie Edmondson will provide a presentation on personal property tax.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of council, appointees and fellow citizens all, my name is Franklin Edmondson, I'm the Commissioner of Revenue here in Portsmouth. I believe that the Sergeant in Arms has passed out some information. It's also on the, I want to thank the City Clerk's office for allowing, helping us get this posted for citizens to view, and we do have some handouts if individuals in the audience would like to see what we're talking about. Today I was asked to come and talk about personal property, personal property tax relief, and individuals that's going to be dealing with personal property matters going forward, and so if it pleases the council, I'm ready to proceed.
You have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, let me say thank you for your public service to our citizens here in Portsmouth. I know you have arduous tasks each year, and our job is to try to get, to generate as much revenue as we can, and in front of you, you have a memorandum from our office sent today dealing with personal property. I want to take this opportunity to thank individuals from our staff that are with me today who work very hard diligently every day to generate some $66 to $70 million worth of revenue for the city, in hopes that we can increase that 10, 15, 20 million going forward with the three revenue enhancements that we're working on currently. This is just one facet of what we do. So, personal property, as you well know, last year, we asked you to consider a ratio, and that ratio was beneficial to most, if not all taxpayers, because of the effects of COVID-19 and the difference in valuations with regards to the ratio. We did study to show where across Hampton Roads and across Virginia, different localities were using a ratio. As you well know, we have to follow Virginia code, that requires a 100% fair market value, and then we collectively, the Commissioner of Revenue, recommend the council agreed to entertain the possibility of a ratio, which we did last year, was a 75% or 25% offset, and that tax, the taxpayers benefited from that. So if you'll allow me just for one moment, what you have in your document is, first, we're going to discuss a little bit of history with regards to that, what actually happened, our recommendations, and then we have some information, historically, the city of Portsmouth PPTRA percentage history from 2006 to date, or to last year, and then on the last page, Commissioners of the Revenue Association of Virginia, this is Hampton Roads District, and it kind of gives you an outline of what some of our neighboring communities are doing throughout Hampton Roads. And not to read this whole thing to you, Mayor, what I'd like to do is brief this document, open for questions if anybody has any questions, and I'd be happy to drill down if there's concern. But we did a history of personal property tax act. As you will know, the General Assembly passed a relief in 1998, and the city's required annually to establish that personal property tax relief percentage, and we've been doing so in accordance with Virginia law. The second one, B, is ratio history, and in 2022, as I mentioned previously, we did recommend a 75% ratio to our assessed value for all vehicles valued by NADA, National Automobile Dealers Association, used car guide. That's an industry-specific recognized guide. And then you can read the part of that, and at that time, if you'll go down to D, we recommended that personal property tax relief be set at 45%. That was the lowest that we had seen it since the inception of this program. Moving on to C, we want to focus on three major things, transparency, and previous mailings and communications have expressed concerns with COVID-19-related demand, increased values, outpacing supply, factory closings, and other factors involved in the year-over-year increase. And what was happening is, individuals were, have a car, a personal property of value that increased, but it was just increased in their driveway. They didn't sell, they wouldn't have benefited until they sold that individual vehicle. And those numbers were askew in a sense that they really didn't represent, they represented a value increase, but it was the same vehicle in their driveway. So you, we approached council, you agreed to a ratio at that time. PPTRA for 2023, I'm on number D, or letter D, rather, all personal property vehicles weighing over 10,000 pounds will benefit from increased PPTRA. 45% in 2022, we're recommending 50% in 2023. On the first 20,000 of assessed values on personal-owned vehicles, other vehicles do not qualify, other vehicles that do not qualify for PPTRA do not, are not included in this action. So as you remember in the past, because we made an across-the-board, or we recommended an across-the-board ratio, in some cases, commercial vehicles were included. Commercial vehicles do not qualify for PPTRA, and therefore must seek relief through their federal or state tax filings. And then E, at this time, we, no ratio recommended for 2023 using NADA and a sampling of our billing, the assessed value for tax year 2022 and the assessed value for tax year 2023, a large portion is showing a 6% to 8% decrease, primarily from December, excuse me, November of 2022 to January of 2023. Virginia law requires us to use January 1st as the tax day, so January 2023 numbers are what we're looking at. We are seeing a modest reduction downward in value, and so with that, we're, therefore, our recommendation is that no ratio should be considered for this calendar year. And having said that, I would like to thank and compliment our interim city manager who's been aware of this situation. We've been ongoing discussions throughout this process, as well as our budget team here in the city. We have had some changes, as you well know, moving forward, but we've always tried to maintain open levels of communication, and I think it's imperative to get you up-to-date information as you're making decisions regarding the budget. So customarily, I do not come before you necessarily for a PPTRA rate necessarily, but I'm happy to answer questions, Mr. Mayor, at your discretion, moving forward. It is a unique time for us, we're all trying to recover, if you will, from the pandemic, the two years that we lost in valuations, and unfortunately, Virginia law requires us to use the fair market value, which are reported sales, that is reported after the action. So we're actually trying to make massage, if you want to use, or work with those numbers to create the best possible budget forecast and revenue forecast for you as you deliberate your budget discussions. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to entertain any questions, or if anybody has any discussion, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Edmondson. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just educational, reeducational from last year, just to make sure I'm clear, and also, citizens that are listening, when you say that there's no ratio, but from what you said earlier, by state law, you have to assess at 100% fair market value. However, are you saying that with the ratio, it will allow for 75% of assessed value? That's what we did last year. And so for this year, you're saying it'll be straight 100% of assessed value?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I might, that is correct. In other words, Virginia law requires us to assess at 100. With the commissioners and the council's consent, we have to agree to the ratio, which last year they did, because the numbers were so askew. Our best estimate at this point, recognizing that all of these numbers are in estimate form at this point, we haven't run the book. That'll take place sometime between now and April 1st, which will generate bills on April 15th, and then those bills will be due on June 5th. So yes, we're required to assess at 100% fair market value, and then you, as a council, can make a decision if you choose to revisit the ratio, we can obviously go back and look at those numbers. This is not a final, you know, discussion, I'm saying where we stand today, so you can see, have some preliminary review of what these numbers are going to be. What we're recommending at this time, working with the manager and her staff, is that we don't pursue a ratio at this time. But that decision ultimately is going to be left to you, you know, the council through your budget discussion.
Right. So has there been any figures, do we have any figures as far as how that will impact citizens this year with it being at 100%?
Well, what will happen is, that's why we recommend increasing the PPTRA. Majority of vehicles in Portsmouth are personal property vehicles, and most of them do qualify. We have a large number of veteran or other exemptions that are getting, already getting a zero, you know, for them, and then commercially, that was one consideration that we did look at last year, and we extended that to them because of the COVID situation. But in most cases, they can move that, transfer that to their state and/or federal tax filing. So that whatever they pay locally, they'll be able to offset that on their, I'm not giving them tax advice, and I'm not an attorney, but normally what happens is, they, whatever they pay locally, they're going to offset that in their federal tally. So we thought the immediate need, as it has been since 2006, has been Personal Property Tax Relief Act. So routinely, outside of last year, that's what this council's always adopted the rate, which we recommended, and that's kind of, we just went back to normal. We went to 43 last year because the way it kind of worked out, you only get an X number of dollars from the state anyway, so 9.4% to 9.8% is what million, is what we get from the state. Our goal was to create no hardship for the city of Portsmouth. So we can do whatever you choose to do as a council, but it is going to affect our budget if those funds don't come from the state. So our recommendation is, use the state funds to the full capacity through personal property tax relief, and at this time, we're not pursuing a ratio, but obviously, if you ask us to, we would, you know, we looked at all the numbers, this is the best approach, but we can go back. I mean, we're still in the budget discussions, and we're, you know, it's all under review at this time.
I just thought that last year, it seemed like there was more data that was given in regards to how it's going to impact, because we saw significant increases in car values. So I was just curious how that actually is playing out, but what you're saying here is the recommendation, no ratio, and this 50% here as far as property tax assessment would kick in after 50% of the value?
Right, they're already getting the benefit. In other words, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue? Okay, if you go back on this page, it says a history of percentage history, so in 2006, the citizens of Portsmouth and the council approved a 50% ratio. There was a governor at one point in time who ran for office saying, we're going to eliminate personal property tax, and they ended up, the General Assembly created a relief program. Portsmouth and every other locality in the state had to submit numbers from 2004, and then that's what we live with even to this day on what the state will pay. So our focus has been, try to get back to the normal status. In other words, this is not a tax exemption program. The ratio wasn't a tax exemption program. The ratio, as it was, you know, reviewed on last year, was a one-time, and it's multiple times if the council chooses that, but it's a one-time, I won't say fix, but an approach to try to level the market standing. Not knowing what the market conditions are going to be going forward, we want to try to give the benefit, I mean, you know, the taxpayer the benefit of this money, and so short of, that ratio was in place, and there's a lot of communities that are considering it based on our experience in the past, but they're not finding that the ratio is going to offset very much more than what the increased personal property tax would be, I mean, excuse me, the personal property tax relief would be for individual users. So if someone brings their car in today, and the council adopts a 50% rate, a PPTRO rate, that individual on the first 20,000 is already going to be getting 50% off, and the way the program works, that's not coming from our, you know, the city of Portsmouth's budget. That's money that we're receiving from the state at this point. And so the offset, we have a lot of revenue enhancements, or maybe three major revenue enhancements, and my hope is, as we continue the dialogue moving forward, we'll have better revenue numbers to share, we just haven't realized them to date. And so I don't think it would be prudent for us to recommend continuing the ratio at this time. I'd be more than happy to take a, you know, further look at it, but at this time, we can't recommend that.
Councilman Moody, so you have the floor, then Vice Mayor, and then Mr. Hugel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Commissioner. Last year, and I think my colleague mentioned this, I think we had some actual numbers on what the ratio would represent, and I think, I guess my statement is to the city manager, I would like to see what the impact would be if the ratio stayed at last year's level. Do we have that?
I don't have it right here with me, but what we did was, we ran numbers from 45% to 50%, to 52%, to see exactly where we would stand, and we can bring that back, I can work with Commissioner on that, because it was, again, like he was mentioning, the value of the assessments last year ran about $622 million.
In excess, right, yeah, yeah.
In excess, yeah. And this year, they ran about $602 million. So we basically looked at every percentage for PPTRA that the city could offer, that could, one, put the citizens back to where they were last year. So because we did a ratio last year, and because we did a percentage last year with PPTRA, we took some samples to determine how can they stay basically the same, even with the increases that they have. And so as we ran a few samples, we chose 50%, one, because during the proposed budget, it would get us where we needed to be for revenue, and we also identified that a large percentage of our citizens would pay basically the same, or a little less than what they paid last year for their personal property tax.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I would like to see those numbers, and I think that's a conversation that council should have, and the reason why I'm saying it is, our citizens, I don't have to tell you, with inflation still running at the 6% level, and with assessments at double digits, our citizens are getting hit left and right. And, you know, a few dollars here and a few dollars there might not seem a lot, a lot to some of us, but to retirees, to people on fixed incomes, they're having to make some difficult economic decisions, and I think every dollar helps, and if this council can help delay some of those increases, I think that would be money well spent for the well-being of our citizenry, so.
Can I just say, Mr. Mayor, one thing?
Absolutely, sir.
This is mass appraisal, so what ended up happening is, we're looking at all classes, and so if individuals have a specific need, or they have a specific vehicle, we do tax appeals every day, and so we're one of the only localities in the state, and particularly in Hampton Roads, that's going to do one on a Saturday still. And so we want to, I agree with you, we need to be given every break, but this is a revenue generation source, and so what I'm going to suggest to you is, if we don't maintain, follow the state code, and give you the best realistic approach, we see where revenues have increased across the board, so in other areas of your revenue generation, you're going to see some of that, maybe 38%, maybe 20%, maybe 10%, maybe what have you. So at that point, the numbers, we're going to have to find some sort of balance, which we can go back to the drawing board to bring further clarification, but the reality of it, we can always take someone out of the block, out of the mass appraisal, but the first bite of the apple, if you will, is going to lend itself to the reassessed value. We're starting to see the values trend downward, and this is not a, except, it's not a tax-exempt program, the ratio was never intended to give somebody a tax break vote, so to speak. I mean, we can look at it any way you want to look at it, and I'm happy to have that dialogue, but our goal was to try to get back to normal as quickly as possible, and at this point, if you look at the last page, you'll see Hampton Roads, those that have reported, we're one of, among the highest ones in the state, I mean, in the Hampton Roads region, if you will, the district, for personal property tax relief. And I hear what you're saying, I'm happy to continue to work on it, these are just a work in progress, and we'll try to bring back any numbers that might help you, but the idea is that the 25% was a reduction based on the prior two years, and we're starting to see the economic, you know, recovery, and then we've got to get back to some sort of normal, you know, rate, normal, excuse me, assessment.
I'm well aware that it's a revenue generator, and a pretty substantial one at that, but at the end of the day, it'll be up to council-
Right.
-on what we do, and not everyone's comfortable coming down to fight for some tax relief. You know, I'm sure a large percentage of people do not do that, just because they don't know what's involved, it's probably an intimidation factor as well, so I think it's up to us-
Are you trying to say I'm intimidating? I'm not. I hope I'm not. I'd be happy to, you let me know who wants, I'll come to their house. They don't have to come down.
No, and that's nothing on you.
I know, I know, I appreciate what you're saying.
But what I'm saying is, people are being pressed hard economically.
I know.
And they're having, a lot of people struggling out there.
Yeah, I promise you, we'll continue to work through the process with you, to give you as best information as we can. It is uncharted, you know, territory where we are, and of course, you know, it's not an easy adjustment or easy place to be, it's just where we are. And so-
Absolutely.
-opening, keeping the lines of communication open.
Right.
That's where we, you know, we're trying to, so I'm happy to continue.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Lukasberg, may I have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for the presentation. I see that a majority of the localities listed here have made no decision undecided, and there's only four that have made a decision, and out of the three that have made, out of the four that have made a decision, Portent is the only one that has increased by 5%. The other three have decreased by 2%. And so, you know, that being said, I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Moody, with us making no decision, or if we have to make a decision to decrease, because our citizens are hearing increase, increase, increase on every, every end, and that takes money out of their pocket, so we want to be able to aid them in places where we can. So if this is a decision that this council can deliberate and decide on, I would hope that it would be no change or to decrease. I know we need to make money, and we need to generate money, and revenues feel good when they come into us, but we also have to be advocates for our citizens who are looking for, you know, some cutback or short, you know, some relief, like you said, but it is, customarily, the person will do no action. If it's to pay, they will just go ahead and pay rather than to come in and to ask or to plead for, you know, a way to keep money in their pocket, and if we can do it on the end of not making any change, then I think that will be easier for us to do.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly-
Absolutely.
-we agree completely with your sentiments and share with Councilman Whitaker and with Councilman Moody, we want to give the best tax break we can, that's not our goal. This is a snapshot in time, so this is kind of fluid, I mean, it's going, when we actually drill down and get to the numbers of what it's going to be, then we're asked to be given, you know, some sort of rate reduction anyway, so the rate reduction on the PPTRA at this point is 50% of the origin, I mean, 20, first 20,000. So they are getting substantial reduction initially, and the ones that will not be, obviously, will be commercial, and then we're going to be advising them, obviously, to talk to their tax preparers to seek it somewhere else, but I promise you, we're going to do what you've asked, you know, what you asked us to do, we'll continue to do that, number one, and then, you know, working with the manager, and then number two, we want to seek whatever tax relief we can, that's why we try to get one of the highest in the region, you know, or this, in the, you know, this area to date, so.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Councilman Hugel, so you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So two questions. First, a comment, I appreciate this, it's helpful to know what's going on around us. Just to be clear, a bigger number here means more relief, a lower number means less relief. So you're proposing more relief to Portsmouth citizens than, say, Akamak County, which is providing 38% relief, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so big is good, this is not golf, this is bowling.
Right, right.
Secondly, just, I like to work in round numbers, so the assessment value of a citizen's car, let's say his car last year was sitting in the driveway and was assessed at $10,000, you all provided a 75% ratio, so in the end, his car was assessed at $7,500, right?
Yes.
Okay, so last year, $7,500 car sitting in his garage, once the 75% ratio was applied. Still got that $10,000 car, now a year's come and gone, you said it's depreciated by 6% to 8%, so let's give him 8%. So now that car sitting in the driveway is worth $9,200, right? 10,000 down 8% is 9,200.
Right.
Okay, and you're proposing no ratio, which means last year, he paid tax on a $7,500 car, and this year, he's going to pay tax on a $9,200 car, is that right?
Well, yes and no, because really, it really depends on how the number end up, you know, washing out, or how, the numbers are what they are, and on that, on your example, yes.
Okay.
But the reality of it is, is that he will get 50% off the first 20,000, so he's going to get a 50% reduction, and the ratio was designed to bridge a gap, as a segue, if you will, from the pandemic where people were out of work and having even more loss than where they are today. Most people, and here again, I'm not an economist, but we're finding out that people are going back to work, and they are able, you know, to pay, yes and no. The short answer is yes.
Okay.
But the longer answer is-
Yeah, so it's just going after the assessed value of the thing sitting in the driveway, and I got it that maybe two years ago, it was a $9,000 car, and last year, it went up to 10,000 because of all of the stuff that was going on around us. We took action to take that $10,000 and knock it down to 7,500, and so to-
That's correct.
-Councilman Moody's earlier point, I think we need to think about what the, how the math really works out, because if we're now asking our citizens to pay against the $9,200 car, where last year it was only 7,500, we're going backwards.
But remember, you got 45%. It's way up here.
I got that, so last year, they were relieved by 45% of that 7,500. I, I got that. So last year, they, they, they were relieved by 45% of that 7,500. Now they're relieved 50% of 9,200. Okay. So to Councilman Moody's point, I think we got to do the whole math problem, see how that turns out with revenue into the budget, and then decide, does it make sense to ask to pay for a $9,200 car when we only asked for 7,500 last year?
Right. And the reason, and thank you. And the reason that we did that is we sat down and did samples as well. A $19,000 car was $19,000. So what, what we're in, so if we looked at '21, '22, and '23, in '21, the car was $15,000. In '22, the car went up to $19,000. And now for '23, the car is back down to $14,000. So you had, so, oh yeah, it, it was unrealist, unreal. So we, we followed and tracked. And so maybe it would be helpful if we bring those examples back so you could actually see what that really looks like.
Yeah. We, we really need to know where the book comes in.
Yes, okay.
And then can make an informed decision on how much of that book needs to go into the revenue that you're expecting in the budget from personal property tax.
Okay. And, and what we'll do, because Trey and I and his sidekick, Miranda, and the Commissioner's office, we sat down and we tracked it from 45 down to 52 so that we could be right where it was a relief for the citizens to get what they got last year without seeing an increase. So absolutely.
And Mr. Mayor, just to be, for any clarification, we want to give you options. In other words, we don't want to put you in a corner, say you have to do this or that. Obviously, the dialogue and the open communication is where we want to be. I'm more than happy to meet with any council member. I know we meet on a regular basis with the, with the manager. But we're happy to continue the dialogue. There are some options. And some of my colleagues around the state are looking at other options with the ratio, as an example, where you give a different percentage. Instead of 25%, maybe you do a step, maybe to, maybe 15. I wouldn't go less than 10 or 15 because we're starting to see that that kind of bleeds over into now you're given more of a relief and exemption, if you will, than, than that. But, I mean, I hear you that people need help. And we're more than happy to implement whatever the council decides. So there could be a step where we may not do the full 25%, but you do a, you know, 20 or 15% going forward. That could be an option. And that, that's something that you may want, at that point, then you do have to try to address the, what the percentage of the ratio is going to be. I mean, excuse me, the PPTRA, rather, what it would, would be.
Yeah. So, so to your earlier point, we want to make sure we use all of the state money that's available for relief.
Exactly.
So I'm with you on that. We just got to figure out what that math is to make sure that everybody gets the full benefit of the state relief program. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
So I assume we'll be come back?
Oh, okay. You have the floor, ma'am.
If it would please counsel, if I could first send you all the breakdown of what we did and some examples so that you could feel comfortable. And then that way, you can ask me questions before I come back and bring it before council. Because I'm sure you're going to have questions when I send it. And I want to make sure that if you're thinking that, your cit, the citizens are thinking that as well. So we'll be able to have the dialogue back and forth, and it won't be fresh information for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, then. Councilman Moody.
This is to our city manager. It would be helpful if, in your send back, if you would give us what that personal property revenue was last year and what, what we received last year. And then, as you showed the different breakdowns, we can compare what we brought in last year with what the recommendation of the breakdown shows and what, how we can maximize for our citizens without losing the revenue that was gained last year.
And Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My question to the Commissioner is, do we know what the median value of a car, residential car in Portsmouth is?
You mean on our, you mean our total book of what an individual, one individual vehicle would be?
Yeah. And, and the reason why I'm asking, we're using 19 and 20,000. And I know that the average new car price is above 35, I believe. So
It is.
It, it would help us, I think, to visualize that if we knew what the median is, you know.
I've seen that number recently. Short answer to that, and I'll, if anybody has an extra...
We'll report that back.
Yeah. The challenge that we have with that is, is that each individual is going to be specific to that model, to that, it goes through your VIN number. It's so sophisticated now.
I realize that.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm going to get you that. I'll get you that.
But at the end of the day, there is a, a median
There will be.
Value. Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions from our colleagues on council? Well, Mr. Commissioner, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you and your team for doing an outstanding job. The work you all do down there is complimentary. And we appreciate all the work you and your team do to bring the information.
Thank you very much. We're happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Okay. So we had a change. We're moving social services to a, a next meeting. Right now, we have business compliance. And that presentation will be given by the interim planning and zoning director, Ms. Joseline Terry Adouma. Oh, and I also like to mention, we're bringing this to council in segments. Because one of the concerns was at a previous meeting, how we're moving forward in addressing the businesses that are out of compliance and in violation. So we wanted to bring to council exactly the steps for businesses to start with the city and the different avenues, and so that we can address some of those concerns.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Glover, Honorable Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, Madam Manager, Ms. Terry, and others assembled. I'm Joseline Terry Adouma, interim planning director. This evening, we'd like to talk about the business license process, or should I say the business compliance process, as it relates to the planning, zoning department, and building and inspections. When one is attempting to start a business, you should al, always verify that what you plan to do is permitted on that property. Unfortunately, we have the naming and claimant group that sees a building or land, and they think, this is what I can do. And they move forward with that. But that's not what you should do. You should call the planning zone and then make sure that you, that the usage you propose is permitted on that site. So you would obtain a clearance. So you submit an application for that clearance. You tell them exactly what you want, want to do. Sometimes you may have to go through the use permit process or rezoning process, but still, that's still part of the process. You just can't just go and do what you want. After you've done all of that, then finally, you can go and get your, your business license from the Commissioner of Revenue. Earlier, I mentioned use permits. There are some uses that you need to submit an application and go through the planning commission and city council to get permission for that. It's not permitted by right. You need a use permit. And these are, the planning commission, it takes some time to go through that. There's several reading, one reading in city council that. The planning may be revoked. Once you get a use permit, there are conditions attached to the use permit. And you have to adhere to those conditions. If you do not adhere to those conditions, city council can revoke that use permit. And we speak about zoning violations. Oftentimes, we get a call and people say, well, something going on here, something going on there. Can you stop it? We can only stop something unless they're, they have a zoning clearance. And we can revoke their zoning clearance. We need to give them time to do it, 30 days. We can take them to court. We can't go and, and stop a business. That's not what we do. As for building, they can put a stop work order on something if it's against the building code. If it's electrical, mechanical, or something like that, they can stop it. But they can't stop it if the use is not appropriate. And finally, I'd like to say that planning and zoning can revoke a zoning compliance permit. Permits and inspections can revoke electrical, mechanical permits. And city council can revoke the use permits. The Commissioner of Revenue revokes business license. The entity that issues the permit is the one that revokes the permit. We all sort of have our lanes that we have to sort of stay in. We communicate. But we can't stop a business. We can't revoke his license because we didn't issue the business license. That ends my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Adouma. Where, where are we on the use of technology as far as with the application process, as well as with inspections? I know that's been an issue that has been raised about the whole process of going through, getting some of these items. Where are we technology-wise?
I understand you can submit your applications online, and they're forwarded to the zoning administrator, and he will get back with you.
Okay. And what about inspections? I know during COVID, there was quite a bit of use.
You can also schedule your, your inspections online as well.
Well, what I was going to say, there was quite a bit of use of cameras and videos. Instead of persons actually having to come to places, there was use of the video technology that other cities were doing, that cut costs on traveling and using vehicles' time. Where, where are we? Are we in that process? Or are we at that point where we're using technology that way?
When, when we deem it appropriate, we will use technology.
I mean, as far as do we use the video cameras to have inspections instead of actually sending out people? Where are we with that?
We can, we can do that. Let me see to my zoning administrator.
Mr. Zoning Administrator, would you please come to the microphone?
This is Mr. Kelch.
Please come to the microphone, sir. How are you, Mr. Milhouse?
Outstanding. Good evening.
Good, sir.
At this time, we still do person-to-person in-face inspections of locations when they've been approved for a use. So we've never really used technology where we just sent out someone with a camera or took in their submission for any type of photo evidence. We will always go out and inspect the location ourselves.
I know other cities have incorporated using that so that it's actually the landowner, property owner, it's actually them, I guess, providing the video for the city to link into or vice versa. I'm just curious, is that something that we're looking at?
We haven't ventured into that yet. Like you said, you brought up COVID. COVID kind of restricted us and kept us in that momentum where we would try to make direct contact or to visit the location personally. So we haven't visited that yet. I believe Mr. Adouma was looking into that, and she was doing some investigations with regard to that. But at this time, we are still making direct contact.
And so a contractor who's trying to get permits, they can do that all online?
All applications can be submitted online. It's, after that regard, though, we will make every effort to confirm what it is we're approving. We'd like to take, you know, if you could send in photos. But sometimes photos don't give us the full picture of what's being done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody, so you have the floor. And then after that, Councilman Hugel.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'm Ms. Adouma. Thanks for the presentation. A couple of questions. On a use permit, obviously, we know that the issuing party can revoke it. But can you explain what that process is on getting a use permit revoked?
We have to investigate the site and see what's going on. And then, once we see what's going on, we have to notify the person they're in violation. We have to give them time to correct the violation, might be 30 days or something like that.
Well, is, is that a finite period? Or is that just an arbitrary number?
Normally, it's, it's 30 days.
Normally? I mean, is it, is it in writing that, that my, if I don't correct, have corrective action, that if I go past 30 days, I lose my use permit?
Mr. Milhouse, can, could you address that, please?
By standard, it is 30 days. They have 30 days to respond to that. Once we've given the notification that they're in violation, they have 30 days to respond.
Okay. Then, then if that response isn't acceptable, what happens then?
Well, they should summon the court.
Okay. So there's a court process?
There's a court process. There's a legal proceeding. Yes, sir.
Okay. So the final decision is actually up to the judge?
It becomes a legal matter. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the, the applicant or the use permit holder is responsible for the court fees?
In most cases, yes. That's what happens. So we haven't had one where we've had to pay those fees. We do bring our representation, though. But we've never had to pay for any type of legal fees. No.
Okay. And the use permit, just to clarify, that goes with the property. Is that correct?
It stays with the property. Yes, sir.
Right. Not, not the operator, not?
No, sir. They can't take it. It stays with the property itself. Yes.
And it can be transferred if the use stays the same and it's not violated within two years? In other words...
For the property, yes, sir. It can stay there. Yes, sir. It can be reinitiated as long as it stays there. But they must qualify under the same circumstances and standards with regard to the use itself.
Now, is that use, that, that two-year time period for the use, is that set by a state code? Or is that up to a locality?
It's, actually, we're going along with the state has, and the locality does recognize the same thing. So, yes, sir.
So the maximum with the state is two years?
Two years.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate you sharing the rules because we recently had someone here looking for a use permit. And they wanted to start a business. And the pictures in their briefing showed that they were already operating that business. And, and they claimed that they didn't understand the rules. So, so there's that. I'm wondering what the penalties are for willful violation of the rules. So if a business owner allows something to happen inside his business that requires police intervention, seizure of illegal things, who's penalized? The business owner? The business, the person that's doing the, the thing inside the business? And what are the, what are those penalties for breaking the rules?
You have the floor.
So...
You have the floor. City Manager, you have the floor.
Please, Mr. Milhouse. And there are a lot, so there are some things that we are also establishing. And I'm glad the Commissioner is here because he may be able to speak to some of the things that he has to address when he has to go out and pull a license because they're in violation of, of their business or in violation of being in compliance with their business. So we do have some standards that we actually abide by. I don't know if they have them all in front of them, or if that's something that I can provide later. But if you have anything you could speak to, just in a quick summary of what that is, I think that would satisfy for now the request.
Ultimately, and unfortunately, it falls on the property owner as the one who would be held responsible for many of the violations. They usually saw it as a civil offense. If at some point, they're negated and there's not a response, it can move to a criminal. And we do have fees and fines, and I can share that with everyone after, if you don't mind. And we, we, we actually haven't had to go that far. Usually, they respond very well. We did have one about three years ago, and because the owner was out of town, had lived in Florida, and then there was a partnership, and that person was in the military, we ended up taking it to the point where it became a misdemeanor. And the judge made the determination to charge them $71 for every day the offense existed. It'd be nice, he expunged every, he did away with everything because he felt, because of their situation, that they were closer by, they would have took care of the situation. But it was his offense. But we do have those, and I will share that. Does everybody have a copy of the code? I'll share that with everyone after.
Thank you.
And make sure everybody gets one. Thank you.
That would be very helpful. Thank you, sir.
So the example I'm thinking of is much more recent than three years ago. It's like last week.
Yes, sir.
And so... And so, I guess the reason I'm interested is, if we don't have penalties to discourage that behavior-
Yes, we do.
-then, we're just going to keep fighting that behavior. And so, that's kind of where I'm going. I want to-
You're trying to figure out if we do something to encourage these people to stop, to cease to-
I want to do something to discourage them, so that they never bring that business back to our main street again.
Yes, sir. And again, the zoning office can only approve a use that we're aware of. If somebody is operating outside of what we approve, then that would move on to other channels.
I'm with you. And so, when they're operating outside of these rules, there ought to be penalties.
Yes, sir.
And I want to figure out, if we have those penalties, then let's employ them, and if we don't have those penalties, then there's something that we, as a governing body, can do about it.
Yes, sir.
But if they're doing something illegal, then the police department would handle that. I mean, when you had the situation with the pop-up drugstore, the police came in because it was something they were doing illegal, and we reported to them, and some of the citizens reported to them. Ultimately, we had no authority to shut them down. Police had that authority, because they're doing something that was illegal.
Yeah, but my understanding is, the folks doing the illegal activity weren't the owners of the building. And so, if they're not the owners of the building, then presumably, the owners of the building are now in violation of your rules. And maybe they were ignorant of what their tenant was doing in their building, but maybe they weren't.
Mr. Commissioner, you had some comments you'd like to make, so you have the floor, and then I'll come to you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just to bring some clarity, our office generates the license, so we award the license, if you will, operating a business in the city of Portsmouth is a privilege, not necessarily a right. And so, the license is intended for approved usage in the city of Portsmouth. And so, and they're not transferable. So, I think maybe what I'm hearing you say is, if somebody's not the owner of the business, and whether they have a license or not. So, they come to our office, we issue a license. Of course, I'm not an attorney, but we deal routinely with the city attorney's office. They represent us on cases of this situation, and we have used private counsel in the past. But if the commissioner's office obviously awards the license, then we can revoke the license. So, if they claim that they are licensed, and they have a specific class of business, they've been approved for zoning, then we issue the license. Then we find out they're operating outside of that, then obviously, there are steps we can take to recall the license, revoke the license, if you will, and/or pursue other legal remedies, if you will. By that, I mean, we've initiated in Portsmouth, and we're going to be speaking in two weeks, I believe, on this aspect of it. The Commissioner of Revenue is a tax authority administrator in some respects, and then a tax enforcement officer. So, we do have a law enforcement component to our office. We can summons that individual in to our office, place them under oath. We can take other legal ramifications. In our office, we have two special conservators of the peace. They are through the Department of Criminal Justice Services and through the Portsmouth Circuit Court. They can write a summons. Portsmouth police officers, any member of the Portsmouth Police Department, if the individual does not have a license, they can take action at that particular time, which we're going to be reviewing on the 28th as well. And then, we have a Commissioners Combined Code Compliance Task Force, and we meet on a regular basis. And then, we also work with the police department, has a reset type of task force, and we go out to look at these businesses to make sure they are in compliance, compliance, rather. The most important piece of it is, is we need information. So, if that business is out there, and somebody sees that they're not acting in accordance with their license, then we can take the appropriate steps to either curtail that activity or call into question. And why is that important? Because two main components, if you have the ABC, Virginia ABC is a large component, if they're not in compliance with local laws, then their ABC permit could be revoked as well. And also, I don't know if you're familiar with, but convenience stores now fall under, used to be Department of, Virginia Department of Health, now they're going to be under Department of Agriculture. So, we've included those individuals on our team. We have a member of Fire Marshal, Police Department, City Attorney's Office, and several others. And we've had recently, other cities throughout Hampton Roads come to our office and to our meetings, rather, to determine, you know, if they can employ that in their areas. So, first is, they will contact our office, city manager, zoning, wherever, whoever they reach out to, to let them know that there is a violation, and then we do the research. In some cases, it might be, you know, just be a reach out and get it worked out, you know, amicably, or go to the next step, which probably would end up being a court action. I don't know if that brings clarification to it, but-
Thank you, sir. And Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
That was the exact question. Thank you, Commissioner, for answering the question, because my question was, is there a task force out there for each of the departments? Because citizens don't really know who to call. Do I call zoning? Do I call business license? Do I call the Commissioner of Revenue? Is there a hotline for someone to report where they're seeing some action? Or do you have a team of people who go out and routinely check for inaccuracies or violations?
Usually, when we get this information, we share it with each other immediately. So, if a citizen calls and says, "Mr. Millhouse, are you aware this place is going on?", I'll let the commissioner know, the police department be aware, sometimes even the health department, because they're selling, serving food, or whatever the case may be. But, yeah, we're all in contact with regard to it. Just wanted to address the one thing he had said. The property owner ultimately is the one that's held responsible. We will notify them, even if they're not part of the business. And I could, again, after the meeting, I will share with everyone that letter that was sent to this most recent one, because they're not exempt from being part of the responsibility with regard to that. They will be notified immediately. Thank you.
And we'll do part of that as some of the report-back information we give, but I just wanted to alert council that one of the things, because of the rise that we're seeing in violations, is we do have a great team, but I decided to put a compliance person that could be the liaison to speak with everybody, and that would be, like you asked, a point of contact. So, all of the emails that I get when there is a concern about a business, it would go to that person, and they would work with the team that's already in place to kind of work that angle to get that addressed. And so, we're in the process of hiring that person now, but fortunately, he has the background that supports everything that we are trying to address here. Thank you.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor, and then Commissioner Revenue.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I appreciate the dialogue that we're having. A lot of what we're speaking about is pertaining to regulations and code standards. But what if there's a business that they're operating in their license per se, or use permit? However, that company or business has a lot of illegal activities that are, that their consumers are doing on their property? What are the procedures or the process of that being reported, as well as, ultimately, the property owner or business should be held responsible if they're continuing to allow it? That becomes a public safety issue. Just this week, we received an email from some citizens regarding a convenience store in the city of Portsmouth, that there has been a lot of criminal activity that's been going on for years, and a lot of drug selling. And so, ultimately, that should fall back on the property owner or the business owner, which ultimately should fall back on the city of Portsmouth if nothing's being done.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Commissioner, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. To be specific to your question, I don't know of any license that we can generate from our office that allows an individual to break the law in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, if someone is breaking the law, obviously, they need to contact law enforcement, and they need to be dealt with, you know, accordingly. So, having said that, if you get a license for a grocery store, convenience store, what have you, selling crack cocaine out the back, then that's a legal issue. You don't have a license. I can't give you that authority to do that. So, we try, Portsmouth is open for business, so make no mistake about it, we want to be open for business. But we do have a lot of entrepreneurs and people that are in the gig economy, and people that are trying to make money now that public policy has not kept up with. Virginia public policy routinely has not kept up with the gig economy, so to speak. So, we all know individuals that are out there trying to make a buck. If you're in business in Portsmouth, you should have a license, and you should contact our office and the Commissioner of Revenue's office in order that we can go through with you what is the legitimate and legal way for you to open. If you have a business license, it's not transferable, so these pop-ups and other things that are open up, they should have licenses as well, and in some cases, food trucks and other festivals, and you name it, anybody, we want you to come to Portsmouth. We want you to do business, but it's no need to invite someone here to do business, and then the city doesn't benefit from them being here, because the city has the burden, if you will, for fire, rescue, first responders, all of those types of things, maintain the streets, clean the streets, all those other things that we're talking about. So, we have an in-depth program that we're going to be presenting in two weeks, and I know that, you know, this issue is hot now. We are ready. I mean, we go out every day, particularly when we know about it, and if you have a specific address or something, we can work together. The task force is working very well, and I think that when you get multiple agencies involved, and those agencies are addressing fire code violations, ABC violations, health code violations, all these other things, that individual really tries to get that corrected pretty quickly. But, of course, to the zoning issue and/or to legal issue, maybe the city attorney can elaborate in two weeks when we discuss, but if you have a building, or a land, or, you know, a location that you're trying to open a business, and then that business don't work out, well, then you have to come back and get further authority. You can't just change your business activity and think that your license is transferable to that, because it's not.
So, what I'm referring to is not the business owner per se doing something outside of their scope. I'm referring to their patrons being on their property, selling drugs, and then that, you know, if that comes to a point where, you know, it's continually happening, and the business owner is doing nothing to stop it, because what we're told a lot of times to go is private property, well, it's open to the public for them to be able to participate, to shop, and so, that becomes a public safety issue.
If you have an address or a business location, we'll be more happy to put it through our process and try to find whatever legal way we can address it.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Thank you. That was very, very enlightening. Thank you all. Are there any more items that you need to present, Madam Manager?
This segment is done for presentations.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item of liaison reports, council liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports to present at this time? Seeing none, then this work session is adjourned. We do have a need to go into a closed session, and so, at this time, I'm going to ask. Councilman Moody, would you please read the motion?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to, A, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding Norfolk and Portsmouth Belt Line Railroad versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth City Court Case Number CL 20004472-01, and B, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding the Southeastern Public Service Authority.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Ms. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We are in closed session. We do have a need to certify coming out of closed session.
Yes. I hereby move-
Go ahead, go ahead, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I hereby move that each council member certify that, to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second.
Madam Deputy City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barnes, absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Ms. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. That concludes our closed session and the work session. We will reconvene at the regular hour, our regular meeting, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.